And the first person that I have on the list is Jared Lucker. You come to the microphone, introduce yourself, please, give us your address, and then we will go. And I will try to use the timer. I'm new to using the timer. So if I flub it up, practice will be perfect.
My name is Jared Lucker. I live on 311 16th Avenue in Rochester.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. During the pandemic, my family and I experienced homelessness as a result of a confluence of factors beyond our control. In addition to this experience, I recall vividly when I was a child having to live with my dad in his car as he struggled to save for a down payment as a single father. Thankfully, we had family, friends, grit, a little bit of luck, and prayers to help us out in our time of need. That being said, there was nothing easy about those circumstances. What those experiences taught me was that they could happen to anybody, those with a job and those without. From the practical questions of where to eat and sleep to the doubts, fears, feelings of failure and shame, it is a fate I wish on no one, especially a family. We came to Rochester to escape those circumstances and were welcomed with open arms by a great community with opportunities abounding, jobs, safety, and a fresh start on a solid foundation. This community has meant everything to us, and I wish to see us thriving together in the same way for each and every citizen. I want to thank you all for taking the time to examine this pressing concern, and I'm absolutely certain that with people as smart, as talented, and as passionate about our community as you all, that this issue will be solved in due course. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I need staff to tell me how I clear this so that I can give the proper timing to the next person. Oh, it automatically cleared, I think. All right. I'd like to invite Erin Sinwell to the podium, please. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Erin Sinwell, and I'm the Executive Director of Family Promise Rochester. We have a shelter in Rochester for families experiencing homelessness. I need to say my address, 3305 Gazelle Lane Northwest. Sorry, I forgot that part. And I'm just here tonight to let you know that what you're going to hear from the, you know, from the presentation in the steering committee tonight, that while the target audience that the steering committee has been working on is adults, single adults experiencing homelessness, that we are very supportive of their initiative. I feel like that they've done a great job in forming the entire kind of homeless community network on the work that they are doing, and they've asked for input from everyone, not just those that are serving adults. We definitely have seen an increased need of families experiencing homelessness over the past two years. Currently, we have 26 families on our waitlist, but it's usually between 25 to 40 families. So we are very supportive, and we are excited to hear what the county thinks of this, and we encourage partnership. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Reverend Jerry Cannon? Let me see if I can start this. I'm sorry to be so inept, but I'm new to using it, and I'm still counting down from, I'm counting up. Well, this is kind of embarrassing, isn't it? Have some technical assistance, please.
I'll be your timer.
I want it for people to see, too. Oh, you might hit the button at the smart clear. Guess what? You hit the button marked clear. All right. Your patience is greatly appreciated. Would you mind introducing yourself?
Absolutely. I'm Reverend Jenny Cannon. Sorry for the illegible handwriting. And I am, I live at 2822 Sunset Lane Northeast, but serve as one of the pastors at Christ United Methodist Church, 405th Avenue Southwest here in Rochester. And I am here to affirm and thank you for the work that's been done so far on Any Path Home and to let you know that it is really important to the faith community, and particularly to the community that I am most familiar with at Christ United Methodist Church, to continue to see efforts to address housing and homelessness in a compassionate and fair and just way in our community. We are so grateful for the partnership with the county and the city, and also with our incredible service providers. And this is a really important issue to our community. We have a meal each week where we see many folks who are unhoused in our community and see how important it is to continue to find ways to be connected and feel that they are not falling through the cracks. And so I think a collaborative effort is a really important process and the right path forward, and we affirm our support for Any Path Home. I want to thank you and all the people who are a part of leading this and look forward to seeing where it goes into the future and how we can be of support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I'd like to invite Kathy Peterson. Welcome.
Kathy Peterson, 831 33rd Street Northwest. I am a former Rochester public school teacher. And I just want to say, the Almighty has made all of us. But each one of us is unique. We are each unique. And I was at the NAACP meeting the other week, and their idea is that we want to have a united Rochester. What if we have a united Rochester, that we all see ourselves as a family? And if we're a family, wouldn't we want all people to be treated well? We are a compassionate group. I belong to Compassion Rochester. And we treat people the way we want to be treated. So when we talk about homelessness, do we think of them as lesser people? Because they're homeless? No, this is ridiculous. We need to say them as one of us, as one of our family members. We are one for all. Why can we not see that we are all here for a purpose? So my idea, I came up with, what if, just what if, we wanted to help the homeless? Could we give money and have the city, or I don't know if they wanted to give a little boost to the person that's doing that, it could be a religious organization that does it, it could be a group of people that want to do it, but we all want to make one for all. And wouldn't that just be awesome? We would have, if everybody in our town is taken care of, we are all better because of it. All of us, one for all. And just because you have a college degree, or you belong to this or that, you are no better off than the person who is suffering. Got another idea.
You are out of time, though, so summarize quickly, please.
Oh, shucks.
Summarize that idea quickly.
I'm out of time. Okay, I'm sorry.
Maybe this time I'll get it right. Reverend Luke Stephens-Roger, please.
Hi. Luke Stephens-Roger, 1605 6th Avenue Southwest, and Minister of First Unitarian Universalist Church here in Rochester. Grateful to be with you, grateful for your service to the county in interesting political times, so bless you for your public service. I'm also grateful to be part of a group of faith leaders in and around Rochester that have been very interested in gaining knowledge and connections about how do we address housing and homelessness in collaborative ways that are about belonging and dignity in our community, as well as practical to helping folks find housing solutions. So I simply want to say a quick few things about my support for Any Path Home and this continued collaboration. One, one of my earliest memories as a child was collecting cans with my mother in a local park in North Mankato. Shortly after we moved there, my dad had a back injury and then started working for the city there, but we had very little funds. Little did I know as a three-year-old that those cans and the county's recycling program were helping to put some food on our table, each little can, a little more food for me and my brothers. As you know, poverty has many levels and varied needs. Mine was extremely minor in the grand scheme of things, and yet it was extremely impactful in my life and the life of my family. Another memory was about building faith-based partnerships in Minneapolis through Beacon Interfaith Housing Collaborative, where I slept outside with youth at Plymouth Church in downtown Minneapolis, raising awareness about how we could build collaborative relationships among all the different sectors, city, county, faith communities, and service providers as well. All that to say something I know you well, understand, as many others, experiencing homelessness and housing insecurity is varied and has different needs, and it's partnerships and community and care for one another's dignity that helps move us forward. So I'm grateful to be part of that and glad to continue as we find collaborative ways to do that work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Stack?
So my name is Ryan Stack. I live at 539 North Broadway Avenue, apartment 206. And I actually experienced homelessness back in 2015 when I had a mental health crisis. And places like, you know, The Landing were not there, you know? And so I relied on family to house me during my mental health crisis until my mental health crisis went way off the charts to where I pretty much was living at Generals until they could find me suitable housing. And fast forward to 2020 during the pandemic, when I was, you know, needing to, for my own health reasons, health safety, to move out of my then foster care provider into my own place, I had extensive help with Dan Fifield and The Landing to find housing. And I'm in support of this Any Path Initiative, and I've received many services, you know, from Christ United Methodist Church, Peace United Church of Christ, and the Salvation Army and others. And I could speak on behalf of the people that are homeless is that even though we have more services today, we still don't have enough. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Tanya. Tanya Rigger?
Hello. Whoops. My name is Tanya Rigger. As many of you guys know, I'm on the resident commissioner on the HRA board, and I didn't have anything planned, but of course I've got to say something, you know? I just, I'm really proud of this community because since I've lived here, I've seen things come about. The shelters, The Landing. As a part of the board, there's a lot of progress, I think, being made, and I love that. And that just inspires me to be a part of this community, that we're doing something and that we're, excuse me, supporting the need out there. As you know, I also was homeless. And the interesting thing is that anybody could become homeless. We all know that, right? I mean, I'm surrounded by people who are suffering and on the verge. And what I would like to see is more strategic programming, that I plan to actually share what they've done here in the future. It's a part, it's a piece of the puzzle that I think is missing, that had I had the strategic programming that I fought for, I might be further advanced than I am right now. I'm still struggling. I'm not out of the woodworks yet. And, you know, being homeless and even housed, because I was housed under a friend's roof, I mean, that was a rocky situation, too, but it takes a toll, you know? And I just support the work that you guys are doing, and I'd love to, you know, this is everywhere, and that's why it's a big deal. What happens in our communities, it affects us. It affects us all. It affects our families. It affects our neighbors. It affects us all. And that's why this county, this city, needs to do something. I mean, exactly what they were saying earlier about family, I guess. You know, it really is because it does make a difference, and it matters.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else who would like to use the public comment period? Get around the room. Welcome.
Chairwoman Cascaden, members of the commission, my name is Kathleen Harrington, and I'm with the Rochester Downtown Alliance, and I'm here to say thank you. Thank you for the work that you have led, for the work that you've done for many years. And I am so pleased to say on behalf of stakeholders I serve how grateful we are for your collaboration with the city. This solution does require great collaboration between governments, nonprofits, and the private sector. So all I want to say is thank you very much. We are here to serve you in this mission as well. We must get to a point where this is not an issue in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would wish to use the public comment period? We'll allow Karen to finish her comment. We're so gracious about me cutting you off. We'll pretend you're your sister now.
Well, you know, homelessness affects everybody, and it affects the person who's homeless, I would think, in a very emotional way. What if we had a type of mentor-mentee relationship? I don't know if it would be one-on-one, if it could be a group of people, if they could come together and talk about their experience, talk about what they're suffering about, and how maybe somebody could help them. What would that do to give them the impetus to go on and to do better and to have a better mental state? Because, oh, the mental state is really, I mean, we're everything with our minds. And if our mind was solved and peaceful, what that could do to helping ourselves? Oh, it just, anyway, a mentor-mentee. You know, the public school has a Strive program, which is awesome. And so anyway, I think Rochester could have a one-for-all mentor program.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to use the public comment period?
Can I say one more thing, real quick?
No. I'll have many opportunities with you, Tanya, on HRA board. Well, listen, listen, listen. Is there anyone else who would like to use the public comment period? I actually broke the rules in letting Karen speak twice, so. There will be consequences, I'm sure. Is there anyone else who would like to use the public comment period? Seeing none, we'll conclude the public comment period, and I will call the board meeting of August 20, 2024, to order. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business tonight is a public hearing to amend the Chapter 1400 of the county's zoning ordinance to add cannabis business regulations. Mr. Dunn will give us the orientation. This is a hearing. We will not be making the decision this evening. But if any of you are at a public hearing, if you want to comment on the proposed ordinance there, it is a public hearing, and you will have that opportunity as well. So, Mr. Dunn?
Yeah, good afternoon, Matt, or evening, or whatever time it is. Good day, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Dave Dunn, Olmsted County Housing and Planning Director, and here to introduce our cannabis text amendments. Just to kind of get us started, we are asking to postpone or leave the public hearing open and then postpone action until September 17, as we're still working on a couple of the technical details as far as how some of the documentation got put into the packet. So we wanted to make sure that everybody had that opportunity, but I know that the public hearing will be open this evening, and if anyone has any comments. But I did want to just kind of highlight three pieces of this legislate, or this zoning code amendment. And so, one, I just wanted to let you know that it is highly regulated by the state. So as we go through this and we talk, and I know that a lot of you get questions about what is this, what is that, a lot of those uses, in fact, all of them were set up at the state level. So it wasn't something in which we decided that we wanted to have a mezzo business or whatever it might be. The second thing I just want to highlight is this is the first time that we will be using what's called an interim use, which is, it's not new in the sense of planning, but it is new for us. What that will do is, when we talk about an interim use versus a conditional use, an interim use allows us to put a time limitation on that use. So if we have an interim use for a period of three years, at the conclusion of that three years, for an interim use to continue, they would have to come back here and get approval. A conditional use historically would be once that conditional use is approved, so long as those conditions are met, the use can continue. So that is one other change that you'll be seeing in that, and you've already seen. And then I know one last thing that had been kind of asked, that we'd been asked about, is kind of whether or not cannabis should be grown indoors or outdoors. And the ordinance, as it reads, allows it to be grown outdoors. The reason for that is that the direction that we have been given from the state is that cannabis should be treated like any other agricultural product, and therefore, we can't regulate where or how it is grown, just like we can't regulate that corner beans are only grown indoors. So with that, I will, if there are any questions or else, if there's anyone else here who wants to speak, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Members, are there questions for Mr. Dunn? Commissioner Sanjam?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Mr. Dunn, I'm reading this, and with respect to, for instance, tobacco, our tobacco ordinance really covers every inch of Olmsted County. If enacted as written, would this also cover every inch of Olmsted County with the proviso that other local governments could enact an ordinance more strict, if you will, than ours? Is that the way this is written?
Well, thank you for the question, because it is a really good one. And I'm going to try to answer them, and I'll look to Tom to give me either thumbs up or to make the correction. So the way that this is written, since it will be part of the zoning ordinance, this will just be applicable to the areas in which we have zoning jurisdiction. So all of the areas, the three townships in which we have direct jurisdiction over, and then the remainder of 15 townships will be able to set their own zoning ordinance guidelines that are either as strict or more strict than what we're going to bring forward. As far as kind of that difference, I think that's the difference between a public health regulation and then a zoning regulation. Tom?
Right, that's spot on. You'll recall when the board was asked and approved the prohibited use of cannabis in public places ordinance last fall, just like Dave described it, you know, I characterize it, you're either wearing your public health hats, or you're wearing your planning hats. And when you're wearing your public health hats, as you did last fall, that public health authority, like with tobacco, for example, is countywide, including inside the city limits of all the cities and the townships in the county. However, you're wearing your zoning hats, if you will, at this time. And so when you're wearing your zoning hat, it's only in the areas outside the incorporated limits of the cities where the county has authority to act in a zoning context, so.
Mr. Dunn and Mr. Conan, I think, given the large audience, it might be helpful to review the fact that this is one of many times that we are looking at cannabis regulation. And Mr. Conan has just referenced the previous action of the board relating to the public health side of cannabis. You want to just give us a little bit of context for the benefit of the people who are here?
Yeah, I think as the legislature legalized cannabis use in 2023, and then as they're moving toward retail and other uses being allowed starting in 2025, what we are doing is setting up a set of different regulations as to how we are regulating cannabis in our community. And so it's everything from how we treat it at our parks and how we treat it in our zoning code, and then how do we treat it on the licenser side, and a level of everything in between. And I'd turn to Mr. Granzi, who's kind of our cannabis czar, to make sure that I didn't miss any pieces of that as well.
Thank you, Dave. Madam Chair, Commissioners, yeah, Dave is correct. And, you know, I'd also share that not only did we bring the ordinance forward to the board to consider previously, but we'll be bringing further language to the board here later this fall to make some additions to the cannabis ordinance that was initially passed. So you're exactly right, that we need to take this in bite-sized pieces, really, and make sure that we're addressing a number of different areas and avenues as it relates to cannabis here, and at the same time, in some situations, waiting for continued guidance from the Office of Cannabis Management from the state of Minnesota. So that's why we're doing it when it makes sense and when we have the guidance that we need to make sure that we're following within the parameters that the state sets as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanjam?
Thank you again. Let me just follow up to my question to the basis of it. And I'll be pretty direct. I think that the advertising of low potency cannabis across from the rec center in what I view as a very profuse sort of way is inappropriate to that area, which is occupied by all kinds of minors, children, hockey players, swimmers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not sure if that's a public health hazard or a zoning issue, but if it is a zoning issue, then my concern would be with the city and convincing them on a zoning perspective as opposed to a public health hazard. Is that right?
Yeah, it would be, I mean, it's, yes, I mean, I think we would say that would be a sign issue. And then when you start to talk about sign content, it's very dicey as far as what's allowed and what's not, and how, and all of those other kind of First Amendment issues that may come up with it. So it is one in which they look at the sign from a content perspective. It's very difficult, but then looking at it from, you know, how much and how large can it be? And, you know, I agree with you in your kind of, your concerns, but I know that becomes a challenge. It would be for us if we were, if that was within our jurisdiction, we'd have the same challenge.
Okay, well, thank you.
Other members? Questions?
Madam Chair, so Commissioner Sanjam, I think you were making a comparison between the low potency hemp-derived cannabinoids and then cannabis product. So, Mr. Dunn, could you kind of clarify how zoning, or this particular zoning would apply to those two different products? That, I, but I guess what I'm getting at is that hemp-derived cannabinoids were legalized well before cannabis was. And so I'm not sure that the zoning, that this cannabis-based zoning necessarily applies to the hemp-based cannabinoids.
You know, my joke is, I always say, if I say I'm so glad you asked that question, it's because I don't know the answer, and I'm trying to buy some time. So I'm so glad you asked that question, Commissioner. And, yeah, I mean, there are so many different nuances to this. So I think, yes, the different type and where it's derived from and everything else. And I don't have a really good answer right now, but certainly we can kind of look back into some of that. And then as it comes to, you know, the zoning components as well, what I can tell you is that a lot of it is, there's, you know, within the different regulatory pieces, there's things that we just have to do, and there's just regulations in which we, you know, it's not, the decisions that we are making are not, do we support legalization of cannabis because that ship already sailed? So then it's how do we implement that in our community?
Madam Chair, can I just, my comments were made on the precept that this would graduate, if you will, into, if you will, high potency, you know? Whether that business got a license for the full-fledged cannabis.
So are you saying, Commissioner, that we don't know that that particular business would, will be licensed to sell cannabis? But should it be licensed, you'd have deep concern about what kind of signage and advertising any cannabis license business could have when it's proximate to recreational activities where children and youth are involved?
Exactly. Thank you, yeah. And Madam Chair, that is a real, that's a high-density youth area. We all know that.
Is there other high-density youth areas in the community, too? Mr. Granzi, did you wish to speak?
Actually, I'd prefer that Mr. Conan spoke about this. He's, yeah, he'd be the best one to hear from right now.
Thank you. I can give a little bit more background on this. So in 2022, the legislature decided to legalize lower potency hemp products. I think almost everyone would agree the rule-out was kind of not well thought out. And almost immediately, lots of retailers started selling lower potency hemp products. I've been working with Public Health and the Sheriff's Office on I've been working with Public Health and the Sheriff's Office on lots of issues related to cannabis. We've estimated, I think, that there's about 180 retailers already in Olmsted County that sell lower potency hemp products. I think everyone's also in agreement that we're going to have our hands full simply making sure that, you know, the cannabis product businesses, again, making the distinguishing, making a distinction, I should say, between cannabis products, which are higher potency and more likely to cause the adverse impacts, if you will, relative to the lower potency hemp products, that we're going to be focusing our oversight efforts, to the extent that state law allows that, on cannabis products and not on lower potency hemp products. That may come at a future stage, but potentially, you've already authorized 14 cannabis product, you know, businesses to potentially be licensed in Olmsted County between the Public Health staff and the Sheriff's Office staff, you know, that's going to keep them awfully busy, we feel, as we get our hands on, you know, what it's going to take for local registration, compliance checks, handling cannabis temporary event permits, all of those issues are coming, as Mr. Dunn alluded to, in a future installment on ordinance changes in the fall. But, so back to your question, the focus really, once we get to the meat of this on September 17th, will be on cannabis products and not on lower potency hemp products, which we'll address in the future, if, in fact, there's a desire by the board to do so. I hope that's helpful.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? Mr. Dunn, have you completed your presentation?
Yes, just as a reminder to open the public hearing and then keep it open until the 17th. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have, we're opening the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to testify on our pending cannabis zoning ordinance? I'm required to ask it three times. Is there anyone in the audience or online who wishes to testify on our pending cannabis zoning ordinance? Is there anyone online? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to testify on the pending cannabis zoning ordinance? A motion and a second to continue the public hearing until September 17th. All those in favor, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion prevails. All right. We are going to move now to our consent agenda. And for those of you who studied this agenda carefully before you arrived, we've had an addition made to the agenda, which is item J. Here's our consent agenda. Approve the Olmsted County Board minutes from August 6th. Approve the gambling permit for parents of graduating seniors, Inc. Approve the gambling permit for Stuartville Sportsman Club. Award contracts for the Graham Arena Roofing and Rain Screen Project. Award a contract for the Olmsted Waste-to-Energy Facility, O W E F, Boiler Number One Tile Conversion Project. Approve the joint powers agreement and contract for the 2025 resident survey. Approve the Olmsted County Public Facing Fees. Set the county truth and taxation dates for the 2025 budget. Adopt the revised resolution for the L C C M R grant for Lake Zumbro Park. And finally, establishment of a mound for a bond, cash, or security to be filed by a losing candidate in a primary election who requests a discretionary recount to the primary election results pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 204(c)(36), subdivision 2. Is there any, is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second? I have a second, a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion prevails. We have no discussion items, and so we're going to move on then to our information item of the update on the AnyPath Home Initiative.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Dave Dunn, Olmsted County Housing and Planning Director. And tonight I have the awesome opportunity to share the work that a coalition that we have been a part of, AnyPath Home, is doing in our community. And so we are here to give an update on the work that we are doing and to share some of that information with you all tonight. Come on up, you're not, I'm not alone in this. And so I have Courtney Dougstead with Three Rivers Community Action Agency, and Alex Hurlaboss from, did I get it?
You did.
All right. From the landing. And just to congratulate Alex also in his new role as Executive Director, they will be doing most of the presenting tonight. I think I have a couple of slides at the very beginning and the very end. So one, again, thank you all for being here, and thanks to the people in the crowd for being here for tonight's update. So we just wanted to kind of give you some background of the items that we're kind of touching on here, just a little bit of our background and history and the things that got us started, some introduction work, some system mapping that's really been going on, and then kind of the next steps. Our request for tonight really is the support for our shared purpose, and that is that everyone has a home. You will hear that over and over and over again, not just in our presentation, but the work that we're collectively doing in our community, talking, starting to talk about what some of those needs are as we start to look at transforming our system just a little bit, and what does that look like, and what does that need? And then to answer your questions. So we are here and we're excited, and as we kind of get started to talk about it, we thought we'd just take a little step to talk about where we've been before we talk about where we're going. And so this has really been going on now for several years. And it started back in 2022, and it really was, as we started talking about some opportunities for state funding, we wanted to get together, a group of shelter providers in the community, a lot of people who are in this room, started talking about what's our needs, what does that look like, and what do we do if there's some shelter funding available? During that time, of course, in 2023, some funding did become available. We were able to submit an application. We're fortunate enough that the women's shelter was able to get some, was able to become funded, so they were able to move forward with a desperately needed facility in our community. But then it kind of got us here, talking and going back to the drawing board just a little bit. And I think one of the things that we learned through this process is that maybe we weren't even asking ourselves the right question, maybe that we shouldn't really be focusing on what does that mean for shelter, but what is it that we can do to end homelessness? And so from that, we really started talking about what do we need as a collective community in order to really have an impact to get to that Build for Zero that we had talked about the last time we were here, but really to get to the point where we have the resources in our community that are necessary to make the homelessness rare brief and nonrecurring.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about a field trip that our steering committee of representatives of the AnyPath Home Collective took. We decided to look around the local communities in the Minnesota area that were doing things differently, doing things unique and in a way that was seemingly successful. One of the areas we highlighted was Hennepin County, and we were able to make a connection with representatives of the social services, specifically the housing departments there. And in late April, a number of individuals from the AnyPath Home Steering Committee went up to Hennepin County to meet with these staff. And what we really wanted to understand is what were they doing differently? What about their methods was unique from what we were doing? Because I don't think we looked around our community and saw anybody not, you know, really trying and finding unique ways to be helpful toward ending homelessness, but what were they doing that was being effective where we were not? And so what we found were some reoccurring themes. The themes started with a by-name list. And so what that really amounts to is understanding the people in your community who are experiencing homelessness in that moment as individuals, not as this percentage of people who fit these intersections, or this percentage of people who fit, really knowing the people the way we want to understand all of our community members. And I'm sure as representatives of this community, you feel that way, you're responsible for different sections, but as a whole, wanting to know the people who make up your community. And so what Hennepin had done is created an understanding of the people who are experiencing homelessness in their community, and they dubbed that the Chronic Index. So that was the title they gave. What we've decided to kind of go with at this point is just staying with by-name list and understanding that we know individuals in this community by name. What they were also doing is that they had taken time to really beef up their case management, and that is kind of putting the by-name list in action. It's saying that we have people in our community experiencing homelessness, and we have people who understand case management and the services in this community. Anyone experiencing homelessness who wants it can have a case manager who's going to be their advocate in action, that person working to make connections for them and put that burden on the system as opposed to the burden continuing to be on the individual, which is a big thing that we've talked about in previous meetings. I know with all of you as well, is that understanding that right now we have a system that asks people already in dire straits, struggling through homelessness, to move all over town, to move amongst agencies, and I will get to that a little bit later. But case management was a huge piece. Moving on from there was a coordinated shelter system. So while the shelter systems in Rochester do talk to each other, I wouldn't say that the system up till now has been coordinated. It's not thought through to the extent where an individual doesn't have to go to this shelter to find out the status, find out there's maybe not room, and then go to this shelter and find out maybe there's not room. And then, you know, in our system, what do I do after I've run out of options? So coordinated shelter system, a shelter hotline that makes it easier on people who want to utilize that shelter. The next thing, and we talk data, and what I want you to hear, I guess, when we say the words "data" is story. It means that we understand that person as an individual, and we've come to know their story, and we've come to build trust so that we can be helpful to the person who is struggling with homelessness right now. But again, we can only solve a problem that we can see, we can only solve a problem that we understand as an individual person experiencing homelessness. So data is the way forward for that, and we have a collection, a subcommittee of our steering committee that is dedicated to doing data a lot better in this community. And again, the big pivot for them, every new group they made, every collection of lived experience, everything was housing-focused, everything was that, the idea that essentially you can't stop being homeless unless you find housing, you can't stop being homeless unless you find housing with supports and services and feel that sense of community that only really housing can bring. If we continue to do housing with 90-day limits, if we continue to do housing with limits of 180 days, six months, a year and a half, that's not really true housing, right? If you access the housing and you kind of abide by any rules any of us would if we took out a lease at an apartment, if you abide those rules, that should, you know, remain your housing. So everything in Hennepin was housing-focused. And again, kind of the last point on here, but one of the overwhelming and probably most important themes of what Hennepin got right is that lived experience, people who had that expertise of having existed in these systems, navigated good systems, bad systems, and in-between systems, that was kind of a leading voice in the understanding and the changing of how things were being done. So prioritizing lived experience was crucial to what's happening in Hennepin.
So we came away from that, and we knew that we wanted to move ourselves and our community into something called a collective impact. We knew that we did not want to function out of disorder and confusion, where every agency is working different goals, elected officials aren't agreeing on the goals, and it creates a space of chaos for the end user. We thought we were probably already operating out of individual impact, where agencies were doing really good work individually and sort of working their programs, but we weren't all in alignment of what the end goal is. We wanted to move, and this is a part of us moving into a coordinated impact, where we're all agreeing that the shared purpose and end goal is that everybody in Olmsted County has a home, and we're moving towards that same goal. And then ultimately, we hope that by the end of sort of the process of planning through this, is that we get to a collective impact. And that's really when, not only is everybody moving towards the same goal of everybody having a home, but they also understand their role in the process, so we are as efficient as possible to get somebody from A to B. And that's really where AnyPath Home was birthed, right? And so we came up with the name AnyPath Home because we wanted to make it clear that any path should lead to home, that there is no one right way to get there or hoop to jump through, that we are all pointing, any point of entry in our homeless response system is pointing people and leading people into housing. At this point, we were going to talk a little bit about the steering committee, which is a group of partner agencies working together. But AnyPath Home, that's not all it could be, and that really takes all of us. So what we want you to focus on today, as we're listening through some of the strategic planning that we've done and some of the dreams that we have for this, is not necessarily getting caught up in the how we're going to achieve everybody having a home, but really focusing on seeing these things through the lens of the agreement and the shared purpose that everyone does, and we can work through the how together. So, oh, sorry, go ahead.
This is a really difficult slide here.
Transition.
I get to talk about all the wonderful agencies doing wonderful work. The biggest thing I want to highlight right here on this slide is the fact that this is the steering committee as it stands right now. And again, the mission is that everyone has a home, the how we get there is going to have ups and downs, it's going to have difficulties. This is not some final draft of agencies that we want input from. This group of steering committee members actively seeks information and input from all agencies that touch on homelessness, all agencies, all volunteer groups, all community groups that want to be impactful and serve. So I'm not going to read them off tonight, but this is the list of steering committee organizations. Moving from there, some of these are going to feel a little bit redundant, but we're just hitting things home. So AnyPath Home timeline, as most of you are aware, has been involved in this timeline, is that kind of April to July, we were working really hard to system map, to understand what it is we've got going on right now, taking that field trip to Hennepin to really understand what's going well in other communities. Moving to August, now we've had stakeholder sessions, and we've received some initial recommendations, and now we've come and sort of brought some of those initial recommendations to you, or we will be a little bit on here. But the important part of the stakeholder sessions was understanding what do nonprofits that maybe don't focus on single adult chronic homelessness, but do family work, do youth work? What do the schools think of some of the things that we've seen? Most importantly, though, what we had an opportunity to do was to meet with individuals, a part of a group called The Table, which is a lived expertise group of individuals in our own community who have been able to offer their voice, to their experiences with the current system, and offer recommendations as we continue to grow our improved future systems. September to December, we're really looking to work further in recalibrating that system and having that sort of final charter that we ask the city, county, and steering committee nonprofit partners to agree to. These speaking engagements where you're going back and forth, very tricky for me. 2024 goals, as I address some of these, create a clear picture of our current and desired system, have a clear, consistent HMIS data management process. I'm not going to get way in the weeds on HMIS. Essentially, what we have in the state of, well, in the entire country is something called the Homeless Management Information System. It's a database where that data or story is captured and able to be utilized for funding opportunities, able to be utilized for nonprofits to be most impactful in supporting people with resources and housing. Our state specifically is in a transition period. We've moved from one provider to another. There are many providers across this country of HMIS. Ours just happens to be in a transition point right now. Another significant goal is having those partner agencies, those steering committee agencies, really start to understand that clear and defined role, and what that looks like then is that collective action model where they are in alignment, but they are also understanding their part to play in serving people experiencing homelessness. With that comes identifying gaps and continuing to enhance and understand our current tools and the ways that could be maybe pivoted five degrees to be even more impactful, and really just working to understand the needs of the individual. That's going to, those are the common themes we're going to hear over and over, is that understanding of people as individuals and that everyone deserves, everyone should have a home. And that's kind of where we're going to end up time and time again.
So we knew that our existing system already had some really good work, and that's sort of been identified and brought to the table tonight a little bit. We know that we have individual agencies in this community that are doing great work. You heard from some of them tonight. We have amazing community members who are engaging in great efforts in this work, and you heard some of them tonight. So we know that is something that's really working for our county when we're looking at this goal. We also know that agencies are successful and excelling at individual tasks, right? The agencies and supportive community efforts are doing well at the tasks they have. And we also know we have many individual examples of success, because people experiencing homelessness are resilient, they're brave, they're resourceful, and they're community-driven. And as it turns out, the way to succeed at solving homelessness is to provide people with housing. We also know that our system has some opportunities, we'll call them, versus challenges. We know that our current system is not a system. There's not one agency that has all the tools needed to assist someone, so we need to create a coordinated effort. And as Alex mentioned, the burden should not be on the person experiencing homelessness. And as Alex mentioned, the burden should not be on the person experiencing homelessness. If there's a problem, that's a systemic problem, then it requires a systemic solution. Agencies currently compete for resources, and we need every agency to thrive, and additional housing and other resources are needed. So we do need that robust spectrum of additional housing options that work for all needs. And then we also need to ensure that housing is connected to services because we know that's the secret sauce in all of it. Alex is going to give us an example of what it really looks like real time for somebody in our current homeless response system, and then what we desire it to look like with those adjustments.
Yeah, so really my key takeaway that I'm hoping all of you have after this slide is that Any Path Home is needed, that we do need to make adjustments, that this just doesn't work. Because essentially what I want to walk through with you, and this is not every story, this is not every person who's ever experienced homelessness's story, this is just a story to really help us illustrate our points. So we kind of start with an individual who's in homelessness. This individual is going to be named John. John came to Rochester seeking a job, opportunities which fell through upon arrival. John is an individual who found shelter through his vehicle. He was able to utilize the warming center after eating lunch at the Salvation Army. Obviously, there are other lunch options, other places John could use overnight shelter or daytime shelter. But over the next few days, John uses several service agencies to get his basic needs met. He completes a coordinated entry assessment, which is synonymous with a housing assessment for these purposes. But he's advised that because of whatever circumstances, it's unlikely he's ever going to rise to the top of the list. Just sort of anecdotally, the situation where that might happen is that somebody doesn't have a qualifying factor like a disability, they might not have something that may qualify them for a housing opportunity. And so in this case, John is advised he's not likely to get housed through the coordinated entry system. At this point, John's had to share his story four, five, could be six times, and at this point, like any other human being, he's tired of talking, he's tired of sharing his story, he's in a spin cycle where these different agencies that he's spoken to know different pieces of a whole story of what his experience has been up till now, and maybe at no point did anybody really come to understand where John's coming from, what barriers even exist to him securing housing, what positives exist right now. All of these agencies individually in their silos have met with John, have understood his story, have really tried to help with what they've got available individually, but as a collective, as a community of nonprofits, faith, community, whatever it might be, volunteer groups, we weren't working collectively, we weren't even working in coordination. And so John has a choice. He can sustain this and continue in a spin cycle, or he can sort of try a different community. And I don't think that that's really what we're trying to line up in the community we have right now. But in this scenario, John does, you know, wait it out, he goes through the spin cycle over and over, and he secures housing. He's in an apartment. Unfortunately, we know that based on the success rates we have right now with people who are going through maybe a similar scenario, that probably isn't the end of John's homelessness experience because he just ended up in housing. He didn't end up in housing that had supports, he didn't end up in housing that had community, he didn't end up in a situation where he had somebody with a proven track record of going through homelessness and securing housing to walk alongside him, where we are working to have lived experience, lived expertise partners in that realm. And so what we see is somebody who entered homelessness in our community and inevitably went around and around telling their story until they were at a breaking point. And truly, in our community right now, this would be sort of a success story because the person did secure even temporary housing. But I don't think this is the best we can do. I'm not going to dig too deeply into this slide, but all of you have it available to you and can kind of look at the chaotic nature of the bouncing back and forth, the left and right of the arrows, and just kind of picturing yourselves, if you've ever bounced in systems, what it feels like to kind of go back and forth. As a veteran, I can kind of speak to my experiences with the Veterans Administration and what that felt like to bounce back and forth, and trying to do the right thing, right? John is striving for housing, John is striving for employment, John is trying to do these things, but the system is letting him down, and it's putting undue burden on him. An ideal response system, this is John's story, sort of in a better system. So John came to Rochester seeking employment opportunities, it fell through. He went to lunch at the Landing the very next day, seeing a new face, the staff member of the Landing, member of the Landing, or any day center, public library, any entity. I feel hard, bad having that in there as a representative of the Landing, but I did not type this slide up either. Seeing a new face, a staff member of the Landing asked John a few questions, helped him fill out a simple HMIS entry form. And what I want to point out in that system is that a simple entry form, a simple understanding of John's story in the immediacy, and in a one-time frame where that information is coordinated across those partner agencies, so that John isn't asked four times. Later that day, that information is entered into HMIS, and John's name is placed in the by-name list. This helps so that he is in real time understood by our community to be existing right now with us in homelessness. Real time, we can pull that data and have that understanding that John is in our community, this is where he came from, this is what his barriers are, he's received services from these agencies already, and his story is known. You do not need to go and ask him to do another set of releases, another set of forms, capture his information all over again. From there, kind of stepping away from John into the provider side, an engagement team of providers meet weekly to highlight the status of all people who are currently on our by-name list or currently experiencing homelessness in our community, and helping everyone understand where they are in that housing journey, what barriers exist, what strengths exist, and what opportunities might exist amongst the providers. A few days later, that engagement team meets, John is assigned a specific case manager who operates out of the Landing, which is chosen specifically because we understand John has now built some trust and rapport with that agency's staff specifically. So again, understanding the individual as they are and their preferences. Trust is not easy to come by. We all know that in our lives, and we should explicitly know it with somebody who's struggling with homelessness right now. Every inch of trust from a provider side is earned. Next day, that case manager is able to meet with John and work on an actual housing plan with, you know, understood steps of what is going to be needed at the time we access housing. Let's start getting that stuff done and checked off while we continue to search for units and meet with providers for available units. In this case, it takes a few weeks, so John does spend a few weeks in this scenario using probably our overnight shelter options, our daytime shelter options, but he has a case manager he can call on and connect with who knows him. This case manager is not overburdened for those probably who have questions about what our case ratios will be. We did learn from Hennepin that 15 to 20 to 1 is a good ratio. Getting into the weeds, sorry. After, in this scenario, after a month, John, with help from his case manager, finds a housing option that matches John's unique needs. I want to emphasize this slide because what we will run into time and time again is this understanding that I have a unit, why doesn't this person just want this unit? You know, this unit is available, this person that I'm trying to work with should just want this unit. And that's, we know this, we know this in our lives, that's not how that works. Just because an apartment was available doesn't mean I just took that apartment. Just because this house is available doesn't mean we all have an understanding of our preferences, our choices, and when we are a housing system that works against that and likes to pretend that people don't have choices, or that they don't deserve choices, and that they don't have preferences, we're really working against ourselves if we really want homelessness to be rare, one-time, non-recurring, all these things. We're working against that. And so again, this ideal system takes into account the understanding of who John is as an individual, what his preferences are, and what he's looking for in housing. From there, instead of ending at housing and saying, we're good, John's housed, check him off the list, take him out of the system, we're good, it doesn't end there. We continue on to community. John continues to be connected with professional and non-professional supports. This increases a sense of belonging, which increases the likelihood of a sense of community. The goal is that eventually, if John feels comfortable and wants to choose this path, that John is then brought back into the system in a role of advocacy, in a role of leadership to be able to connect and be a voice of somebody who navigated a difficult system and secured housing and is now able to support people on that journey as well. Again, not going to dig deeply into this one, but I'll hope to highlight to all the county commissioners the idea that arrows are generally flowing much less chaotically, and that is sort of the system as we hope to see it, is this understanding that yes, there'll be a place for shelter, overnight, day shelter, but that we can take a lot more of the burden as the system and ask much less of people who are already struggling with homelessness, and really letting their voices lead that planning and that system that we want to see in our community. I think you've kind of covered this, but I'll dig into it a little bit more, that idea of HMIS data. Data is our story, data is the way we really understand who we've got in our community and what they're going through, what their experiences are. Utilizing HMIS will help us navigate both this coordinated entry housing list and our by-name list, that comprehensive list of everyone in our community who's currently struggling through homelessness. It allows us as a provider to take that burden again by pulling regular reports, understanding what housing exists versus what housing is needed by the people we're serving, so that when we are advocating for new units, when we're advocating for new properties, we're doing so in a really well-informed way so that people such as yourself understand that you're not wantonly being asked for this or that ask, it's a thoughtful thing that we can show you the data to support. You know, a major part of HMIS is allowing agencies to communicate about the work being done, because what happens then is that we're not asking a person to tell their story four or five times, we're not asking a person to sign through your releases four or five times, we're again, putting the burden on the system and the agencies to make sure that that person is able to navigate out of homelessness with all the support and a lot less of the burden.
So just to kind of summarize, the five pillars of our sort of revised learnings and the revised homeless response system that we would like to see are entry, an entry point, data and the story of the person, connection, housing, and community. And I'll very briefly just re-articulate those. So that point of entry, remember that Any Path Home, so any path leads to housing. There isn't just one agency working on this, no matter where you enter, it's moving towards housing. So there's upon entry, there's diversion if possible, so making sure that we can connect to services and support to prevent ongoing homelessness. And then also ensuring that basic needs are met. So this is the place where our shelter system is really important, right? So we want to still make sure that basic needs are met with that food, that clothing, and that shelter while we're moving them towards housing. That uniform data collection, which basically is this person tells their story one time, and then the system is updating so that any agency can connect with this person and work together for housing. Next is the story. So this is really, really important. We keep using the word data, but what we really mean is story. So everybody has a unique story. We heard some of them today, and what a sacred honor to be able to be told somebody's vulnerable story that they've been through with homelessness. So the more we understand somebody's story, it enhances our chances of matching that person with successful housing. People are the experts of their own stories. So we need to ask people what they need, and then we need to listen, and then we can respond to those needs because solutions to homelessness are unique. And then collection of those stories. So again, that's that real time where we know, and any agency knows, and the engagement team knows where somebody is, who they're currently being served by, and how to move them into connection. So case management, connection, this is where as soon as that entry point is, there's an immediate connection with a case manager from one of our agencies that's working. Again, this person is not working through a siloed pathway, right? All pathways are leading to housing. So we're enhancing our understanding of the story because that outreach staff and that case manager is connecting with these individuals and understanding the story on a deeper level. They're not having four or five case managers, they're just having one. And then we're developing those individual housing plans so we can ensure success by asking the person, what would it take to be successful in housing? And then we're assisting the person through the housing process. We heard a little bit about that in the comment, the public comment portion too, walking side by side with somebody through this whole process. And then there's regular meetings among all connection providers. So any of the supports that this person has are meeting regularly to assist each other and to create accountability, so we're all moving in the same direction. And then comes capital H housing, right? So the point is, we move from entry to housing as quickly as possible. We are creating awareness of housing programs so that every agency knows what's available in the community for housing in real time. And that way, we can match the individuals to those housing opportunities faster and more effectively that are good fits. We are increasing available housing options, so again, we have that spectrum of robust housing for people to choose from, and then we're ensuring people are ready for that housing success. So we're making sure that the system is doing everything we need to do so that we are not a barrier to somebody receiving those housing options, and we're taking into consideration that choice. And then comes the really exciting part. This is community with a capital C because it doesn't end with housing. We know that the solution to homelessness is irrefutably housing linked with services. So we have follow-up assistance, what other services are necessary, we have periodic check-ins, we have those peer mentors that was mentioned, so we're building relationships among people that have shared experiences. Because we know that when we have spaces with folks who have had shared experiences, especially when they're traumatic ones, there is a deep-rooted sense of community that is built and a reliance on relationship. And what we don't want is for people to have to choose between housing and the experience of community. So we want to make sure that both are included, and that's where we have opportunities for volunteers and other people who can come alongside this person in authentic community integration. But none of this comes before housing, right? We know that housing is first so that folks can work on the other pieces without having to worry about their survival. So this is where we all come in, where Any Path Home is no longer a group of agencies that are sitting at a table. We can do this, but we can't do it in isolation. We can live in a city where all people have housing. This isn't a dream because there are examples of cities that are already doing it. And we don't have to agree on the why everyone should have a place to go home, though I hope that we could. We just have to agree that communities are healthier, cities and counties are stronger and safer when all people have a home. And if we can land there, then we can solve homelessness in Olmsted County. We thank you for your support, and we thank you for showing your constituents how much this matters to you. I'm also very excited for you all that you get to say you were on the county board when Olmsted County committed to solving homelessness.
I don't know how you follow that because that was so, and look at them both.
Maybe allow the board to ask them, and if they have any questions.
Well, we actually had a couple more slides, so I don't know why they left us so quickly. But as we're doing this work, and you can hear just how amazing our partners are in the community, honestly, if that's been the thing that I've enjoyed most is getting to know this group, many of them are here tonight, and it's, they're amazing people. And as part of the work, so then you can see here some of the people we have been connecting with, so this isn't being done in isolation by a group of 10 agencies, it's really being done in a community effort, and so we've connected with people with lived experience because we want to hear, we want to honor those stories and understand those journeys. We had a meeting last week with partner agencies, I think we had a room full at, down at Wood Lake, and it was a wonderful morning, and we were able to connect. And while this is starting with those agencies that primarily work with single adults, this is something that as we continue to transition will be something we'll work with families on, we'll work with youth. The plan here is to spread this across all of those populations, and so getting that feedback very early on in the system was essential. We met with some community leadership groups, so I think several of you may have been at that meeting and probably other people in the crowd tonight, so just again, trying to get these connections and get this feedback because we know this is not a county effort, this is a community effort. And so in order to do that, we really want that community feedback along the way. And last week, many of the people here were able to see the Beyond the Bridge documentary. I know all of you now do have that link, so if you hadn't had a chance to see it yet, go right ahead, it's an amazing story. And we didn't know it at the time as we were putting together our kind of roadmap, but so many of the things really matched up almost like checkbox, checkbox, checkbox. So it was really an exciting thing to see and to hear about how the work that we're trying to do in building this system really is being successful at other places. So they did ask me just at the end to talk about building and reinforcing the system. And so as we really are kind of talking about this today, there really is that kind of our next step in this process. And so as we're looking at that, these are the things that we think as we look to move forward, these are things that we start to say, okay, what do we need to do in order to transition this? And so the first thing I want to talk about is that this is not, you know, there will not be a 25 FTE asked tonight, although if you were willing to give 25 or 20, we would take them. But really, first and foremost, it's how we recalibrate our resources within the community already. We know we're doing a lot of these things, so as we talk about doing them together and doing them smarter and doing them wiser, and so these are things that we've identified that we need to solve for right away to build the system. We need leadership, and so one of the things that has been amazing is this has been a great group of agencies. But what we know is when we go from planning and coordination work into implementation, this is a full-time job to coordinate these efforts, and so we do need to kind of appoint that role. And so we do need to kind of appoint that role somewhere and with somebody. The second thing we need is we need somebody to be collecting those stories. You know, we had talked a lot about data tonight in the presentation. It is the key to understanding the level of the issue at any given time. So we do need to have that good data. We have some now, but it can be better. And then we need to get the housing resource coordination and really do a couple of things there. And so it's number one, it's getting more housing resources. And we'll be talking about that over the next few months as a part of our HRA board work. We're looking at how do we recalibrate and how do we kind of work within this system and make modifications to what we do and the housing resources that we have available. And then it's also a little bit externally as well and working with the community and finding more housing opportunities out there for private property managers, landlords, partnering with people who are maybe willing to take a chance and really willing to just rent their property and also try to do some community good. So those are the three kinds of things that we really need to do when we go from those kind of individual dots to kind of connecting all of those dots together. And then once that's built, we know we'll need to reinforce it. Now, we don't know what all of these things will look like. I can't tell you all of the things that are going to happen. But I think that we'll need two things for sure as we talk about how do we grow into this. And we'll need to do outreach. And I think that was one of the things that you heard loud and clear tonight is outreach and connections. You know, it's relationships with people. It's that ability to understand that story and make that personal connection. And then we need more housing options. I think that this group, I know in the work that we do in housing and the HRA side, we're very aware of the housing options that are available and the limits that we have. We need to continue to push and strive for as many different, unique and innovative housing options and solutions, not just from our side. Because again, this is not a county issue. This is a community issue. And so we all need to be doing this work together. So that's kind of where we're at. And then our next steps are really to continue this work. So you've seen, you know, I had a slide in at one time here that it said it was like the halftime report. Because that's really about where we're at in this work. We have done some amazing system mapping. We've identified these kind of core needs and where we want to go. But we really have two things now that are next. And one is that by-name list that you heard an awful lot about tonight. And then the second one is we want to do some documentation of what are all those housing resources available today? Again, how are we matching the needs in the community with the assets in the community? The other two things there are a little bit technical, but are going to be extraordinarily important. One is identifying what is that backbone agency? So as we take this from a thing, a project that we're all working on collaboratively into implementation and longer term, where does that sit? Who does the administrative work for that? Who manages the organization? Who does that person report to? We don't have any answers to any of that today, but those are, those are questions that it's now time to start to think about and ask ourselves. And again, this isn't a county thing, it's a community thing. And so we're working as a collaboration of 10 agencies plus more to try to figure out where some of these things fit. And then finally, we'll be back here at some point in early 2025 to talk about a charter. So once those things are laid out, we will be coming forward to actually say, these are the things that we want to be responsible for as the county, just like the other nine organizations will be coming forward to their boards or city council and asking for approval for their roles in this organization as well. Now, we know that's going to be challenging because it's hard enough to get one entity to approve something, let alone 10. But we really think that is going to be the key to success and implementation. And we know that will take time and it will take energy. And there are always days where you think, is this really going to work? But I think that's where we really, as we kind of look into the future and as we kind of figure this all out, that's going to be the key to our success. And so lastly, I just, we had created this QR code last week. So for people who maybe are here and want to continue to learn more about this, we wanted to put it up there. So if you wanted to just snap a picture of that and put your name and email in there, we would be more than happy to provide you with updates as we go along this journey together. And so with that, I just, like I said, I want to say thank you for your time tonight and for your support all along in this project. And then we'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Invite your other speakers to come back up. Let me just, I'll open it up certainly to my colleagues for questions, but your leadership in advancing this discussion across the 10 agencies is really appreciated. And Three Rivers sponsorship of the Beyond the Bridge film is really welcome. Thank you. Many of us got to see it last week. Audience may want to know that it's going to be available online for the elected officials and the candidates for those positions for the next week or so, till next Sunday. So we're really encouraging everyone to see that hour and a half documentary because it really does tell the story and very much similar to what you're outlining for us as a community. So thank you for your leadership and moving this forward. Really appreciate it. So members, what questions do you have for this team?
I'll start first with a couple of questions about the by-name list. You know, we talk a lot about data privacy in the world we work in. And so I'm curious how you're thinking through how you're going to openly share that across 10 agencies and that information. And then also thinking about the sub-population of the group we're speaking to that really wants absolutely nothing to do with organized programs and systems and really need a lot of assistance and help. Have you, and probably getting too far into the weeds, but thinking about that, any response to how you're going to manage some of that?
Well, I'm so glad you asked that question. But I actually do think the data is important and I think I'll let, I think several of you, and I don't know Alex, if you want to comment on kind of some of the work that's done because it is, there's already some work done in that area through the system to make sure that you have all of the approvals and authorizations and the ability to share information. But I'll let you comment on that.
So again, we have, we have the benefit of some wisdom from our partners in Hennepin County. But one thing that we've always operated under and when I've shared about the engagement team, as an example, that team already actually exists and includes partners like Three Rivers, the Salvation Army, Zumbra Valley Health Center, the Landing. And the way that that group meets right now is that we do have a shared release that exists. It's built into our database HMS. So as we are all licensed users of that system, we're all licensed to share information that has been shared to HMS. There are instances when somebody is experiencing homelessness and wants to say, get on the by-name list or get on coordinated entry and they want some identifying information left off, that is something that's afforded them. I think some of the changes that we'll see in the way we want to operate is that the individuals helping people get onto the by-name list have a lot of stuff kind of put on their plate to explain that if you opt not to have, say, this information shared, it will sort of preclude or prohibit from having access to these resources. But it's also our duty to explain why, again, I'm a Marine Corps veteran, so signing can be a scary thing, right? Why it doesn't have to be a scary thing to sign on to this. And it's our job as providers to really explain that in such a clear way that somebody doesn't have to wonder, you know, anything about what's going to happen to their data, that we are really working with that to be able to make sure that we can provide them all of the benefits of being a part of any path home rather than the select benefits allowed if we only know this piece of information. Or if you really want your data siloed just with my agency, these are some of the things that wouldn't be available to you unfortunately. So it's our responsibility to really explain that. Is that sufficient for point one?
Yeah, thank you. I can answer point two. I have never met anyone who wants to be homeless or stay homeless. But I have met lots of people that don't want to navigate through a confusing system with prescribed programming that doesn't fit their needs. So I think what we're saying is that everybody wants a home. And what we need to do and what we're responsible for is to make sure that it's a person-centered experience, just like all of us have received in our housing. And making sure that programming and support is based on what the person is saying that they need. And sometimes that takes time too. And sometimes trust is needed to be built. But we believe that if there is a case manager and agencies working together where this person doesn't have to figure out the system, but the system comes to the person, that we will see a lot more success with folks who traditionally maybe haven't wanted to navigate the system that we currently have.
Great, thank you. Another question. When I think about resources and you brought it up and have it on one of your slides, that in this environment, many of you are competing for resources. And so coming together and ensuring that you can all have clear roles, you know, a place that you own and programs that you can own and excel at, fantastic. But I think about, you know, bringing 10 agencies together and you're signing a charter. There are times that, you know, if funds come forward and that by going after those funds, you're drastically changing directions. I mean, there are going to be decisions made based on whether funding's coming from foundations, the state, et cetera, and where that goes in the future. So how have you thought, and maybe I'm getting way too far, a couple of steps down the line, but thinking about, you know, longer term, how do we keep accountability across those groups so that when funds come available that could take them in a different direction, that they don't go after that and stay true to what this vision that you've all agreed on?
I can, I can take that. And I think the, the answer is all of our agencies still will have our own missions, right? And the any path home is a part of all of the missions of which we do. So whether that means that the landing maybe provides services that are still amazing, they're not quite within that any path home sphere, that's wonderful. Now, as far as kind of when it becomes more competitive, as far as, hey, the state's coming out with the next round of grants and how do we start to allocate that? I think that's where these agreements and having these conversations on the front end about how do we want to work together and how do we want to disagree? And how do we agree to disagree and how do we bring that up? And I think we've already had a couple of those circumstances where we haven't agreed on things and it's actually probably been helpful for us because it's allowed us to, hey, wait, timeout. What's going on here? What's the emotion? Why is that that way? What is the baggage between agencies that maybe is, just like all of us, we all carry it? And so how do we work together? So, but that's going to be the biggest challenge down the road is to get a group of people to continue to work together and to make that work. But I also think it's our biggest opportunity.
Thank you. Members, any questions? Mr. Dunn, the question that I've heard people say, and I know people in the audience also have is how many, what are we talking about with our housing shortage? How many units of housing do we need? How are we going to figure that out? How do we know? And you referenced it a little bit in your remarks, but what are you anticipating the true demand is?
Yeah, I know, that's the first question we always get, right? Or how many people experiencing homelessness in Olmsted County? The information we have right now would be about 320. That would be the people who are on what we would consider our by-name-ish list right now today. And the reason I call it that is that we do a nice job of putting people on that list. But one of the things that happens is everybody who puts people in the list, they do it a little differently. So if I wanted to think of a game of telephone and I started with Commissioner Wright, by the time I got down to the end of the table and saw what was that message or how did it get sent, it's a little bit differently. So the number right now that we're working with is 320 as we get this started. Now, when you talk about housing units, I think you're not just talking about people experiencing homelessness. So then you start to talk about, you know, the 18,000 units, that's the market demand for Olmsted County as a whole between now and 2030. And then you start to break that down to about the 3,000 affordable units that we need. And so you just kind of continue to look at this. But I think part of what we really want to do by really nailing down this data on the front end is to then understand really what is the need. And so that's why as we're kind of saying this is halftime, that there's still some work to do here. And that's okay because we haven't got everything figured out yet. But we know we have a system, we know we have some big to-do list items. But I think that will really help us understand then what really is that demand? And then within that, what are those needs? So hopefully by the time in six months when we come back here, give or take, we can say, yeah, we have, based on the information we have today, we would have 47 people who really need housing. And having housing that allows pets is of extraordinary importance. That's what we're really trying to get to. So there's still one more step to get to some of that information.
So getting down to specific kinds of needs versus just units of housing in general needed? You know, how many with pets? How many where it's a couple? How many where, yeah, other services available? How many no services available? All those kinds of things you're anticipating you'll be able to identify or project some of that?
Much better than we can today. So I think that, look, we're not going to say this is, this is not going to be a science. You know, where it's like, oh, we know exactly, we have 132.3 units that we need in order to get this done. We can start getting better information and start translating that into what our need is.
Members, other questions?
I've got a question, Madam Chair. Thank you so much for that presentation and for all this work. I'm curious if you imagine, or if it's been part of the discussion, that one agency might kind of emerge as a natural leader or the natural leader of this consortium? Or is it more a discussion that this group of agencies will lead collectively like an egalitarian system?
Yes. I think yes. So I think Dave mentioned that we need to really sort of address a background, backbone agency that's going to take charge of sort of the staffing of the any path home coordinator, some of the data coordination and things. But we also know that the agency is at the table now in the steering committee and then also as we expand to subcommittees and other things, right? We all are really good at not all things, but maybe some things. And so there's a part for everybody to play. There's a finger, there's an eye, right? There's a hair and/or more than one hair, hopefully, but, right? So at some point, when that person comes up, one agency looks like the clear leader for that one person, right? And another agency might look like a clear leader in another person's story. So I think there's kind of like both and. There's some systemic leadership, but then there's also some person-centered.
Yeah, there's not a lot to expand on with that specifically. I think when we talk about that backbone agency, we're really talking about some of those foundational pieces, specifically the three that David highlighted. It's understanding how does that work? How do you oversee this thing that is any path home? Who does that person report to and things like that? But one example I can offer of this projected system is the fact that my organization operates a day shelter. Each day, 140 unique individuals are in that day shelter. Each day, two social workers in our building are tasked with really trying their best to support 140 people's needs. That's not to say there aren't referrals to other partner agencies and things like that. But the system we're proposing is to say that those two social workers potentially are responsible for doing their best to really dig into and support, say, 15 or 20 people individually. And that despite not having space for additional FTEs for the landings per se, the county, Zumbra Valley, Three Rivers may have case managers that live and work and fall under the supervision of Three Rivers or Zumbra Valley. But it is their role to come to the landing and see those individuals that they get to work with as case managers. And so that, in that way, when you talk egalitarian, there is kind of this flow to everything where despite that person potentially spending significant hours of their time at the landing each week, it isn't necessarily the agency that provides them supervision and things like that. And so we're really in a great place where we have somebody helping facilitate the work we're doing. And we have kind of gone over some of these spots that'll feel a little bit like sandpaper, but will ideally get us to the best thing possible. I don't, I don't know that Julie Brock is in the house, but she has done a wonderful job supporting our steering committee and getting some of this stuff on paper for you all.
I will add just one thing real briefly. I think one example, I mean, I think the Coalition for Rochester Area Housing is an example that we could look to. I'm not saying for sure that we would look to, but in that case, the Rochester Area Foundation plays a role, of course, and then their staff. And then there's a Coalition Leadership Council of which Commissioner Kuskaden is a member. So as we're kind of looking, those are the different types of things we're looking at that could be maybe some models that have been effective in this community and others as well.
Commissioner Wright?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much for your presentations. Very good. And I really appreciate the fact that you're looking at a system approach to this because I do agree that you have to get a system together in total to fill all the gaps. And I think I know from my own experiences that a silo approach is only a minor success and is doomed to fail when you're trying to deal with a bigger picture. So I think that's great. And the other thing that I'm very pleased about is it appears to be the great community support for this particular model. And we have been searching, not only us, but many communities have been searching for a model. This model appears to have great potential. And we've heard from, in the movie, some communities have great success with it. So I'm very appreciative of the optimism that we have tonight to move forward with this kind of approach. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Tang? Commissioner Tine.
Well, I'll start off by saying it's a noble cause, and I'm glad to learn of it. But I'm curious, you know, what success looks like? So if we're going to say Milwaukee is a success, what did they go from and to? What is the cost of running that program? How long, how long have these people that were suffering from homelessness, were they able to maintain living in a home? And what do we see this leading to in the end?
I can, you know, it's always, see, I always know Commissioner Tine has the best questions. I'm not going to, because they're hard. And I don't even have to say, I'm so glad you asked that question. But no, I think it's a great, they're great points, right? What are we going to, and what does it look like, and how do we demonstrate it? And then how do we do it in a way that's fiscally somewhat sustainable as well? Because we can't, you know, we can't do this in a vacuum either. So I think that's part of, if I'm going to be honest, I think that's going to be part of what some of the special sauce we have is, is kind of looking at it that way as well, because I think that we have to be able to maintain balance in all of those areas. So now, what does it look like, I think, at the end? It becomes that system. So if we can get these core functions up, then as we're working together, we can document that we are connecting people to housing, and then we can come back and share that information, and we can understand what is the scale of the problem much better in real time, and we can judge our progress. Because I think then it's easy to say, hey, this is working or this isn't working. But right now, we can give you anecdotal evidence of cases or people we've housed, but what we can't do is I can't tell you how many people we housed in 2022 that are still housed today. And if we're not successful and they're just bouncing back, are we really having an impact? So the successes is that we can demonstrate that, and I think that's part of when we talk about building the system and kind of what we need to get to, to then say, is this successful? You know, has this worked? That's what we want to get to. And I know that the movie does give a couple, I want to say in Milwaukee and Houston, they do give some really good data with numbers. And I don't know if anybody, if you all remember what those were, but they do talk about like, yeah, it cut it from this to this.
Ninety-three percent.
Ninety-three percent?
Ninety-three percent is what I recall.
For how long?
Well, they didn't say that.
But I think it's, the idea, yeah, I mean, and the idea, the sustainability components as well. And so then, you know, I think whatever we all choose to do together, part of what we're kind of also saying, I think, tonight is we also know that there has to be a community accountability in our responses collectively. And so then we have to come back here in a year, in 18 months, in two years, and tell you, hey, you remember when we were here that night and we did this nice little math? Well, here's what it means, and here's what we've been able to do, and here's where we've had challenges that we don't, you know, that we've had to redirect the course of action or whatever it might be. So I think that component is needed as well, and I think what we're trying to do is get to that point where we can show you all of that.
Can I answer that question, too? I think my answer is a little bit less eloquent than Dave's, and mine is that success is when everyone in Olmsted County has a home, and we don't stop until that happens. And I think the reason why there's such great community support for this is that everybody in this room feels a responsibility for what's at stake. And what's at stake is human lives that call this city their home. And so I think we can say we're successful, we can say everybody has a home in Olmsted County.
I think that's noble. But it's not, it's not a finite number of people. So if we use 340 as the number right now, and we're successful in getting 340 people housed permanently, and they're on a path to success, that doesn't mean that there's no more people that will fall into homelessness. So I want to know what it looks like and, you know, how it goes on forever.
Yeah. The ideal system that we're talking about, it doesn't wrap up in three years where we come back and say, everybody's, nobody's homeless anymore. Everyone has a home, we're disbanding, the band is, yeah, reunion tour in 20 years. No, what we're going to do is we're going to create a really thoughtful and considerate system that is financially sustainable to ensure that everyone has a home in this community. You're entirely right that there's going to be, you know, 320 people. In three years, we get all of those 320 people to a place where they're in housing that suits them, that is great for them. We have 100% rate of people sustaining housing for three years, but during that three years, we had 150 people come to this community because they found out that Rochester has created a thoughtful system that has them in mind as individuals and really wants to continue to see people move out of homelessness and into housing. So I really think the response is that we are going to, again, not get bogged down with the how, but understand that our purpose is that everyone has a home, and we as providers and as elected officials hopefully are all going to come together and align, that that is going to happen. I understand the question, it's a really thoughtful question, and it's one that I think, you know, as an elected official, you got to ask, I understand that. But we as a steering committee are committed to this shared purpose, and we're committed to finding the way that it's going to work.
Because when the system is working fluidly and it's not stagnant, you're not going to have 150 people homeless all at once, right? They're going to be working through the system quickly because it's working better and more efficiently.
I don't want to take all the time, but this is rare for me to ask this many questions.
It is rare for him to ask this many questions. I can affirm.
All right, so do we look at, let's say we go along on this path, and we're having great success, or what we feel is great success, then do we, do we look at further up the pipeline why in the last few decades now, we've seen this change in society where we have so many more people suffering from homelessness as we did compared to what we did decades ago? And how do we address that?
Absolutely.
So this is a snapshot of kind of the larger picture, and so the first part of it that we haven't talked about tonight is prevention.
Right.
And so as we take this and we kind of get these core pieces in place, one of those is prevention and understanding where are we spending those prevention assets? Are they effective? You know, are we able to make sure that we are able to actually solve a problem? Are we just prolonging somebody's misery? And so, yeah, it's not just this, this is that, there's other pieces to it as well, and absolutely, we've got to, we've got to look at that.
Members, are there other questions? Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I sit here tonight believing that I'm on the front end of something that's really, really big, and I think maybe we all do. And so as I, as I think about it, there's a lot of questions. We don't know how we're going to do it, we don't know how much it's going to cost, but I, I think we're talking about an attitude, that in Olmsted County, homelessness is not an option, that somehow we're going to figure it out, and a whole lot of good people are going to come together and figure this out. And that's what's kind of exciting about being in this, like, embryonic kind of situation that we all sit here in tonight, I think, thinking about. One of the things I'm thinking about, if we're truly one Olmsted, if you will, and maybe you said it, Mr. Dunn, I'm not sure, but, but it seems like, from the standpoint of government at least, we ought to be trying attitudinally at least, and given whatever participation we might get, to get, like, all of the governments of Olmsted County to say, we're on board with this idea, we're on board with this attitude, that in Olmsted County collectively, seven cities, townships, the county board, we're all going to come together and we're going to put a full court press on this. My question really is, and maybe you said it, maybe it just flew over me, but do we intend at all to reach out to the seven cities and the township association and says, basically say, come on board, help us be part of this?
You know, it has not been part of our, kind of our primary small group work. I think as we continue to grow, as we continue to know that homelessness is not just in the city of Rochester, but throughout Olmsted County, certainly having those conversations is a part of it. And so as that kind of occurs, absolutely, and I love the, you know, the thoughtfulness of, yeah, it's an attitude, right? And that's what, that's what's driving this group, I think. And that's why for me, just to be a small piece of it's so much fun, because you see people who really do have that desire and that attitude to make change. And every so often, you're able to be part of something where you catch lightning in a bottle and you don't really know why. But what you do know is you go along with it for the ride, and I'm, that's what I'm feeling with this group of people, and the ability that they have to really end homelessness here in Olmsted County.
And Madam Chair, I'm just thinking with respect to the small cities, they may not have a lot of homeless people sleeping under their bridges, but, but they may, in the end, be part of the solution to helping us as collectively one county, getting, getting our hands around this.
Well, I want to point out that in the audience, we have four of our Rochester City Council members, and perhaps we have, in addition, council members from some of the smaller cities that I'm not recognizing. But we, I did see Sean Palmer here, and Patrick Keen, and Kelly Rickerpatrick, and Norm Wall. And we had, you know, we had intended to have a joint session and decided to defer that till November, so we invited the Rochester City Council members to come here. We also have a number of candidates for office in the audience, people running for a city council, people running for county board. We aren't going to give you the opportunity to come into the podium and ask these folks questions, but I would guess that all three of these people will be happy to stay in the room and answer your questions as you look to be candidates and wanting to be well-informed about our community's needs around prevention and addressing homelessness. So I'm, I'm giving you, I'm asking you to stay after class and, and answer questions. With that, I'm wondering, Mr. Dunn, if there's anything for you want to say, or members, if there's anyone else who wants to pose a question? Mr. Dunn?
No, Madam Chair. Just again, thanks to everybody for being here tonight. Thanks to all of you for the continued support. I think one of the things that maybe the people in the audience don't know is that the Olmsted County Board of Commissioners also serves as the HRA Board in Olmsted County, and you have made amazing investments in housing across the continuum. Everything from family shelter to affordable housing to new senior housing. Probably one of the things that we don't do is we don't share that work, the investments that you're all making in affordable housing in our community, and make sure that people understand that this has been a flurry of activity that's been going on, because we know that we can sit and admire the problem, or we can try to do something about it. And I just want to thank all of you for the work that you do about it.
So, Mr. Dunn, at our last meeting, it's probably in our minutes, I believe, Mark Engel reported that the HRA has created, is in the process of creating 139 new units of housing, senior housing, 10 homes for single-family homes, the Roth Rochester Old Town Hall Estates, which will serve as transitional housing for people coming out of homelessness, the, what am I forgetting? But 139 units for one, is a very substantial investment that we've been making over the last year, everything from, you know, transitional housing to senior housing to single-family homes. And the housing study that the Coalition has authorized, that will, will help us look at overall, how many units of housing do we need, of what kinds, and what kind of progress have been made, been making. The Coalition announced, I think, last time, that of the target for senior housing, we're two-thirds of the way there of what we had projected that we would need for senior housing, which I think is around 600 units. And then that opens up other housing for other families and individuals to move into. So our community has many levels of commitment to housing everyone with a home that meets their needs. And housing is, we're admonished to use the word homes instead of housing, we kind of use it interchangeably. But again, I would invite those of you who are wanting to speak with these three speakers to learn a little bit more about AnyPathHome. And if you're an AnyPathHome member of the Coalition, would you just raise your hand so people can, can see that you're here and you might also be willing to answer questions? All right, so we have people all over the room. So with that, we thank you for your leadership, we wish you well, and we'll look forward to hearing your progress report later this year. Normally, end our, our business meetings with a kind of a quick reports from the various committees that we've been attending. I'm guessing that people are, having been here since 11 o'clock this morning, there's probably not a lot of energy around committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report that one week? All right. So we do have a tradition of ending our meetings with a quote, and tonight's quote is from Mahatma Gandhi. "The true measure of any society is how it treats its most vulnerable members." And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. If you're opposed, too bad.